And I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya if you will read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, February 5, 2021.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Can we all please now stand for the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our first full budget meeting of 2021. It's hard to believe, but it is time to start our budget process in earnest. And this is our first meeting entirely devoted to budget, though we'll talk about a few other things. And just by way of prelude, I want to point out, I can't help but point out that this past week, we began universal preschool in Egg Harbor Township. It was a huge step forward for our students, for our parents, and for our community. Implementing full-day kindergarten paved the way for us to receive the grant to start universal preschool for all of our students. So putting those two together, providing early childhood education to include full-day kindergarten as well as universal preschool, in my view, is the single most important step we could have taken to improve student achievement. Now, we are back into our hybrid learning. COVID is still with us. We see many more signs of good things to come, of improvements. Just, it seems like just weeks ago, we were talking that vaccines were on the way. Well, vaccines are here, but they're not here with everyone quite yet, and we all know that. But we're getting, we're getting there. We can all see a little closer that light at the end of the tunnel. We've heard questions and concerns from all of our stakeholders. People have many different views on the situation. And I just want to remind everyone again, our road back document is a living, breathing document. We are open to making changes and adjustments as we go to make it better and better, to adjust to changing times. I also just wanted to point out, we'll talk about it a little bit more since I did mention vaccines. We did hear last week a very important point about the need for vaccines for teachers and staff, and since hearing that, we have acted on it. I wrote to our governor, to the legislative leadership, our senate president, our assembly speaker, and members of our second district delegation. In addition, Dr. Gruccio has reached out to the county superintendent, the commissioner of education, and some other folks that she'll speak to. And we have a resolution on tonight's agenda to ask that teachers be given priority, teachers and staff, all school employees, given priority for vaccination, and that vaccination take place right here on site at our buildings. It makes sense, and we need it. So with that as a preview, and thank you all again for coming, I am going to turn the floor over to our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Gruccio, with her State of the Schools report.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first budget meeting of 2021. It's an exciting process, it's a long process, but it's important that we have some foundation for when we engage in that process. So this evening, as I do every year, I want to present to the Board of Education and to the public the state of our Egg Harbor Township school.
Dr. Gruccio, if you can use the microphone to make it easier for those at home. Thank you.
Yes, is that good? Is it on? All right, sorry about that. Okay, so before I begin with the state of the schools for budget purposes, the state of schools right now is echoing with what Mr. Castellano shared is, we made history here in Egg Harbor Township. And I am filled with excitement, and we have preschool here offered to our students of our community for foundational skills to make them and help them be successful in their academic endeavors here in Egg Harbor Township. And, you know, it's many, many years that we've needed preschool, and I just want to thank all of you for your support in sticking with us with the dream that we had and how we had to roll this out. And as Mr. Castellano said, that was by passing a budget last year that included that full-day kindergarten and sticking with that budget through, you know, the summer. We all know, we lost funding, but you made it a point to stick with that and to make that happen, and we have that, and that's great for our students. And then applying for this grant for the work of Ms. Anaya, Mr. Dorso, and everyone involved, from transportation to food services facilities, my central office team, teachers, parents, food service, everybody together, putting it together in a short amount of time to make it happen. So we're very, very proud, we're very excited. I've been in the classrooms, they look great, kids are excited, and we're on our road to success. Also involved in the state of the schools every week, you know, that we're in public that we'd share our COVID-19 update. So data from this, this week is today, positive cases in the last 14 days, we have 29 staff and students are currently quarantined due to the positive cases and close contact that folks may have, 22 staff are quarantining, and 106 students. County-wise, we are still in the orange status. There's inquiries about wipes. Our status right now with the wipes are being provided for teachers in small group instruction, basic skills, ELL, and teachers who move at the middle school and high school. We've had conversations with the union president, and this is what, you know, we are doing, and we are providing them and meeting their needs. Broadband, we have broadband, plenty of it, and we're in good shape with broadband. Pandemic response team meetings are occurring. We're not finished with all the schools yet. I haven't had much feedback. I'll wait until they're all finished, and we'll move from there as we take the recommendations or the findings or discussions from those pandemic response teams at the building levels to the district pandemic response team. Mr. Castellano mentioned letters and written to dignitaries regarding the vaccine, as well as the board resolution that's on the agenda for tonight. So we want to get the attention of folks to let them know that we see the need for a vaccine for our educators and our school staff. In any way we can have that happen, that would be great. I've offered our school buildings as a site if need be, and I've also reached out to Atlantic Care and Shore Memorial to see if we can partner in that process, as I've seen that happen in other counties, okay? All right, so let's get into the preparing for our, building our budget. So what makes a community great, all right? All of you to begin with, but the businesses and shopping and restaurants that we have that hopefully we can get into more, more often these days. A family-oriented community, and Egg Harbor Township is large, it's over 68 to 70 square miles, all right? We're very large, but we do our best to, to highlight families, and a perfect place to bring families together is the schools. Recreation and outdoor activities, access to medical care, we're in a good spot with Atlantic Care and Shore Memorial right around the block. Nightlife and entertainment nearby, that's not real much happening these days, but we do have that with Atlantic City, and a low crime rate. But of course, in the end, it comes down to schools, and people are attracted to communities about schools, and I've just done some research and some local comments on Egg Harbor Township schools, we got great feedback. We have great schools, we have great looking schools, we have schools that are clean, we have schools that work each and every day to serve their students, we have wonderful staff, and we're all about serving students well and having them be successful. Community and school district, all right? We provide learning opportunities for students, we work to engage our parents in students' education. Good schools, remember, I remind folks that improves property value. We educate students to become educated adults, and we educate our students with community pride to give back to this community of Egg Harbor Township. This is what we're about, a little pictorial there. All right, every year I present a district-aligned system to improve student achievement, and the budget should focus on proving, improving student achievement should focus on students. So we'll talk about, we have a vision, we have a mission, we have a strategic plan that we're doing very, very well with, having that preschool takeoff met one of the criteria, one of the areas that we listed as one of our goals. We talk about organizational structure, accountability system, and evaluation. So I'm going to go through that real quick. We commit and take collective responsibility so that all, capital A-L-L, all students will learn in our school district. With every hand together, every child, every day is our focus, and it comes down to curriculum that is relevant and provides rigor and also an opportunity for all to excel to their greatest potential. I want to spend a moment on collective responsibility. Just what is it? Collective responsibility is all of us, Board of Education, teachers, administration, parents, friends, people in a community, in the school community, who all have a common vision and a common belief system, all right? So we all want to be on the same page to be that premier school district where all students experience success. And I think we all agree on that, that all kids can learn, and we have to work to help them be successful. We all need to have a common commitment to make it happen, and a common laser focus is why we use data. Now, some people say, oh, data, can't stand data, it's horrible. Data can be our friend or it can be our foe, but in the end, it's a reminder of who we are, because it's going to give us the brutal facts. We talk about facing the brutal facts of reality, we do that, because in the end, you can celebrate, because you're going to find positive and great things, or you're going to deliberate, or there's some data that you may have a question about, but in the end, good, bad, otherwise, it's going to make us better if we use it. And we use a systematic approach where we get everybody involved to focus on the mission, which is to create that culture and climate that embraces, engages, and educates individual students and their learning needs. And we can talk about embrace, engage, and educate, well, we build relationships first. We learn about people through common conversation, and we learn about their needs. And once we know what their needs are, where they're from, and what their goals are, then we can engage them with relevant learning experiences, and we bring them into an education that has rigor, relevance, and that's all built through relationships. Strategic plan, again, this Board of Education passed a strategic plan, it was a collaborative effort where we engaged the community into the planning process, we came up with a three-year plan. And I'm very proud to say that we've hit a lot of areas of that plan. It was a collaborative effort, it's goal-focused, but again, the budget, I remind you again, needs to be focused around the strategic plan. As you see, 2021 is the end, June 30. In normal times, we would have held town meetings to develop that next three-year strategic plan, or three- to five-year strategic plan. But with COVID situation, I think you all know what I'm going to say, live meetings, gatherings, that's not able to happen, and we're spending a lot of time now with the road back to school plan. So in essence, we have met as a school community, and we have put a plan together to provide education for our students. So, but keep that on the radar. At some point, we're going to have to engage in that strategic planning process. So the organizational structure, we focus on relationship building, but there's three things, and these are the pillars of professional learning communities. You focus on learning, so that's the students, staff, supervisors, K to 12 focus, not should be pre-K, pre-K to 12 focus on learning. Focus on collaboration, where our teachers, administrators, and power professionals, staff, we all gather through professional learning communities concept, and we focus on teamwork, all right? We coach each other, we help each other, we talk about students, what can we do professional-wise, professional development to make us better at what we do so we can help students. We focus on results, we use that data, we collect the data, we analyze it, we have tools in our district that assist us in doing that, and then that brings us to the RTI process, because now you're looking at kids, what do they need to learn? If they learn it and they know it, what do they need to extend that learning? So we want to be able to meet their needs. So when it comes to an accountability system, this gets a little deep, but this is what we're about. We're looking to the implementation of educational plans for student achievement, all right? And we constantly do that, as curriculum is a living document, we're constantly looking at it, and what resources do we need to improve student learning? Observation and implementation and utilization of our plan, and we, and we look to support and evaluate the three- to five-year plans that supervisors have shared with you over the last couple months. We are, we see ourselves as transformational leaders, and when you're transformational leader, you're looking to make change, but you're always still looking within yourself and your organization to see how it's doing. So we are constantly self-diagnosing, are all the tools in place for our plan? Who's learning, who's not, what do we need? We auto-correct. We talk about success versus challenges, failures versus the support that we need, but in the end, are we meeting the needs of students in the school district, of the teachers in the school district? And then we self-renew through that constant monitoring and feedback from parents and teachers and students. We look to get better, we look to make our process and our planning, the process of planning even better. And that brings us to evaluation. We're constantly looking at how we're doing, I shared that part, but constantly communicating, all right? So Mr. Castellano, from the board president, communicates weekly to the public. I communicate to the board weekly, I communicate to the public through my district newsletter, I communicate to my staff every Monday. I write them an email and give them updates. So constantly, weekly, monthly board meetings, mid-year reviews such as this, and then end-of-the-year wrap-ups, as I do each June. Our district learning goals are a focus, we constantly keep them, I keep them purpose, purposely, the same each and every year, because I don't think we've met them 100% yet, all right? So why change something if you didn't achieve that goal? Assessment, self-reflexing, self-reflection, revisiting those district learning goals and working to accomplish them. We are goal-driven, we're aligned to the strategic plan, and we realize that our work is never done. It's a continuous cycle of improvement, no matter what we're dealing with. I always say, if you do what you always do, you're going to get what you always got, all right? And I don't really live by that, I like change, I like improvement, and I know we're all on the same page as we work each and every day to meet the needs. So for the board, you have this presentation, as we go through the budget process, you can refer back to it in terms of some data that I feel that's important that you know. We have personnel-wise, there's 1,363 members of our staff here. The demographics of our school district and our county. So here you have your county on the left, and you have your Egg Harbor Township population here on your right, and there are your demographics. Of course, you'll see it a lot better in your document on your computer. Current enrollment, we have it here for, by each school, but bottom line, you have 7,093 students that budget-wise, we are accountable for, because we have these enrollment factors to consider as well. Your choice students, ACIT, charter school, non-hubs, and you're out of district. Class of 2020, we're proud to say we had 581 graduates, and there's our statistics, as I share every year. District services, from ELA, K to three, your Title I, your special ed, your free reduced lunch, here's your, your data that you'll need as we budget. Under curriculum instruction, we follow the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, we're following a UBD framework, professional learning communities are placed throughout the district in differentiated instruction. These are different areas of content areas that we offer. Learning opportunities, our district offers AP Advanced Placement courses, accelerated math, advanced level courses. We offer the PSAT and SAT dual credit courses from the high school with ACCC and Stockton University, gifted and talented, grades three through six. Aviation courses and opportunities now in place, very, very proud of that, and we'll expand that as we move on. Full-day pre-K and kindergarten in our academies at the secondary level. Special education data, classified students, out-of-district placements, super seniors. We offer athletics at the high school and the middle school, and activities at the high school and the middle school. Many, many students involved. Transportation, over 68 square miles, 400 miles traveled a day. Four ninety buses are rolling out, bus drivers doing 494 routes per day, have 102 drivers, aides and substitutes on staff, we have an office staff and our own bus garage, which means we do a lot of our own repairs and towing. We have 43 out-of-district runs, 67 district-owned vehicles, and we accommodate over 1,000 field and sport trips over a typical year. And that gives you the cost of fuel and how many miles driven. Food services, we serve eight schools, we have 65 employees, serve 3,130 lunches a day, our free and reduced lunch rate is 42%. Right now, all meals are free, all right? We have food distribution where we deliver food, and we also have two, three pickup sites. And pre-K feeding has begun, we're going to hear from Mr. Beck in a little bit, and he'll give you some more insight. Facility-wise, we have 10 schools, five ancillary buildings, overall, we own over a million square feet. And I like to highlight that, our use of facilities, we had 2,962 requests worked by staff. 2,102 of those in-house requests, and we took care of, and 860 we had to seek outside organizations, but that's, that's pretty good, we do a lot of our own work. Remember, we have our childcare program, it's our talents program. Total students right now in the COVID situation, we have 177 in the program, and we're serving pre-K to fifth grade. And we've changed that, we've made, really made an educational focus on the talents program, and it's been very, very successful. Security, over the last three years, we built our security staff, it's expanded, and for great reasons, to protect our schools, you know, we have our new lobby design to make our schools more secure, and we have security cars, armed, unarmed guards, and we have the three Egg Harbor Township Class III officers. So again, our district learning goals, you've heard them, hey, we're all here to improve student achievement, literacy for all, stream, social-emotional learning, big component, particularly in this hybrid situation, not only for students but for teachers and staff as well. Support climate and culture with that hashtag EHT Pride, and we always look to expand community partnerships. Just going to zero in a little bit on each goal, talked about literacy, social-emotional learning, and stream, as we know that literacy is a foundation for all. It's a foundation for all our subject areas. Right here is the student-centered literacy and workshop model that we're using, Fox Penel, we use Linkit and MobiMax for data collection. Our math is literacy-focused program, which, you know, it aligns and it covers the literacy for all piece. And our aspire and after-school programs offer that enrichment and remediation, so we're always focusing on the literacy. We use data, and these are the ways that we're collecting daddy, data right now, from common formative assessments to the universal screenings, it all folds into our INRS process and to the RTI process. I'll just speak to this real quick, response to intervention, it's, we have been expanding that through the school district as we look at each learner, all right? So you have the whole class of learners, but in, within that whole class, tier one differentiate instruction is going on. That student needs tier-two support, we'll go into a small group setting, and then tier three with an intense intervention. We also have response to intervention, RTI behavior, and while we're not seeing a lot of misbehavior, if you will, or some problems with behavior within the classroom, right now, we are focused on student attendance and active engagement. Professional development, that's something else that'll show up in the budgeting process. Right now, what we have, just so you know, our monies that were spent on a K to eight workshop components into the hybrid extruction, K to eight with math workshops, focus on small group instruction, K to 12, response to intervention, K to 12, tier-one level instruction for the core instructional practices. K-8 with math workshops. Focus on small group instruction, K-12. Response to intervention, K-12. Tier-one level instruction for the core instructional practices, K-12. Equitable instructional practice, technology tools that we implemented this year, and tools and strategies for effective hybrid education. All happening this year, happening on Mondays. We put four days in the beginning of school before the start of school to help our educators be prepared for this school year. Stream education, aviation education, as I mentioned before, very, very proud of that. We have a club. We have, we offer camp. We have lessons going on, and we have partnerships with ACCC right now. And you'll see in the budget, a request for drone education. From robotics to engineering, the partnerships with our higher education and competitions that our students are engaged in. Again, because of COVID, we're not seeing many of the competitions, but anything that we can do online, we are doing. Regarding the social-emotional learning, again, we work very hard on relationship building, but we have all these things going on right now. It happened this year. We have the Pursuing Public Health season, series, and this could be found on my district newsletter and also on our social media sites where there's links. The Mental Health Association in New Jersey, Power Youth Advisory Board. We've been working with the Child Assault Prevention, Atlantic Care, and Atlantic Prevention Resources. Goal two, positive support of the climate and culture. We're all recognizing reward of students and teachers for their achievement, their progress, and good character, work ethic, and respect for diversity. Our hashtag EHT Pride is embedded in a lot that we do. Our September event, Pride Day, we couldn't have. We look forward to having that next year, but that was where we brought families together. These are some of the resources that we use to support climate and culture. You've heard of the Renaissance Program, our social media. I know most of you are familiar with our Aggie Township School District Facebook site or Instagram or Twitter, but please note, we have 25 or more social media pages out there. Each school has one. Social studies, science, ELA, athletics. So if you don't see it on the district website, type in, you know, an area, and you're bound to find something more about our schools. Okay? We like to brag. So it's out, plenty's out there. I like to use this slide to depict equality versus equity. We preach this. We started an initiative last year, how important equity is and how that we understand the difference between equality and equity. So real quick, equality is sameness. Everybody's got a pair of shoes on, but equity is what's fair. So if I tried to give everybody my size seven and a half, I don't think it would work for you all. Okay? So it's important that we address student needs based on what they need. All right, so they may need shoes, but you got to dig deeper, and they're going to need the size that they need to be successful. Walk that walk. Goal three, expanding the community pride, constantly reaching out to the community to build partnerships and build relationships. We've had town hall meetings. We ran camps. We've had different projects and drives. Again, COVID pretty put the damper on a lot of these things, but we're looking forward for them to happen again. Some changes that supportive education supported, and we have sustained as we branded ourselves. You see that eagle up there. We have the social media presence. We have a security force that's been expanded. We now, we have delayed opening, paperless report cards, data tools. The RTI model is in effect. Middle school electives, towns and aspire, and full-day pre-K and kindergarten. So clap for you. These are things that were supported and we got put in place. So the impact of being underfunded. And you'll hear Mr. Castellano speak more about this as we move on. You'll hear Ms. Anaya speak more about this as we move on. But in the past, just so you know, because we were underfunded, we eliminated many, many teaching positions to balance a budget. Okay? Program eliminations, many programs that were eliminated over the years. Reductions to middle school teams, grade-level classes, sixth-grade sports for media teachers, literacy coaches, services for specials in elementary, and remember the SRO. We had those things. We had to cut them to make ends meet. Okay? We had to implement pay-to-play a couple of years to help things out financially and the use of facility fees, which have been altered through the years. And community relations might have been fragmented along the way, but these are the things that we had to do. The loss of funding was detrimental for our students. We're very grateful that the government has looked to close that gap and help the underfunded schools. And we've been recipients of state, decent state funding the last couple of years, but as you all, and I remind you, we were cut to $4 million over the summer. Needs to fulfill our three-year strategic plan, there's some of the things to look at, expanding academies and some learning concentrations that'll show up in some of the budget requests. Technology, you know, we all talked about, you know, where are we with the 101? What do we need? Chromebooks, partnerships that we'd like to form, particularly with higher ed, and possible restructuring, looking at our alignment of grade levels. And we dove into that a little bit last year. Ms. Anaya began with a couple of board members, the neighbors for change, and because of COVID again, we weren't able to do that this year. We've been consumed with the road back to school. But, you know, there's going to be conversation with the board if that's something we want to resume in the fall. And it was really to build those relationships between businesses in the district, pursue equitable school funding, grant opportunities, as well as obtain alternate streams of revenue. So that's a conversation at some point. So we want to let you know that we didn't forget about that, but I thank you for listening to me, number one, but also for engaging and embarking in this budget process. So thank you to the Board of Education, Central Office, our principals, supervisors, directors, and to the community for being a part of what we do, and that's serving students. So thank you. And Mr. Castellano, we're going to move on to our presentations. And we have, um, you first. We just need a moment to make a transition here.
So at this time, we have our Director of Dining Services, Mr. Tom Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Santillian. Thank you to the Board of Education and the administration. I've been here since 1996. It's hard to believe that all these years have passed by. And through consultation with Ms. Anaya and myself, we thought that it would be appropriate to give a history of my department since my arrival here. When I arrived in 1996, God, my oldest was four, my youngest was one. Caitlin wasn't born. She's our Jersey girl. A little bit about the family. I adopted a $350,000 to $400,000 loss subsidized by the local taxpayer. Our hourly rates and our healthcare costs were 82 cents on every dollar before we bought the first tray for those students. Sales, sales, we didn't have a problem with. We were at the national average or better, and our food and other costs were lower than the state or the national average. So we were able to really control those costs. Fiscal accountability, then in 2008, okay, the state of New Jersey and the Department of Education implemented the emergency regulations. Subchapter nine, it was a budget review procedure, and that of a 255-page document, there was one line in that document that said, "All school lunch programs must be self-sufficient, self-sustaining." What does that mean? That we cannot rely on a local taxpayer. How did we get to profitability? Okay, we took some pretty tough steps. Okay, we had 13 full-time head cooks and head cashiers. They either resigned or retired. They weren't ready to resign or retire. They were very productive, and they contributed very positively to the township. The staff that we have today, they all took an immediate dollar an hour pay cut. All hourly staff took a two-year pay freeze. Six of the 13 newly hired head cooks and cashiers were able to obtain their healthcare. We raised prices by 25 cents, and we joined the Garden State Cooperative. The cooperative, okay, consists of 67 school districts. We have some very large districts like our own, but we have larger districts. What does this do for us? It gives us an opportunity to get the best prices from our vendors. We also have networking that's always ongoing. 35% of that group comes from the business side of food services now because they've actually seen the light, like I did, when the Board of Education hired me in 2000. Thank you, away from the management company. A lot of people don't know this, but in the restaurant industry, for every dollar on average that you take in, there's only a 3% window. The margins are very, very tight. So I must commend my staff for really keeping an eye on costs and making sure that we use what we have in inventory, new menu ideas that the children and the students love. Participation analysis, in '08, '09, we had a housing collapse. We had a thousand foreclosed homes in the township. In Landon County, the unemployment rate was the highest in the country. There was an enrollment downturn. Residents moved. They had to go find employment elsewhere, which resulted in less mouths to feed.
If we could just pause right there, Mr. Beck. Can you bring the microphone a little closer to your mouth? Just for the people at home. Thank you. So just to recap, we were having a $300,000 to $400,000 loss annually. The accountability regs came out and said we must be self-sufficient. There were some very difficult cuts at the same time housing market crashing and participation decreasing. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see from this slide, is that the enrollment has slowly decreased, and that has a huge effect on us. But at the same time, we were able to maintain revenue and costs. Then COVID hits. Okay, March 16th, 2020, Governor Murphy implements Executive Order 104, which mandates that all school breakfast and lunch programs provide meals to their school communities. We would have done it anyway because that's the way this township runs. Now, this is a meal participation reimbursement analysis for the last six years. As you can see, June 30th of 2020, participation dropped right off the cliff. We were down 28% just for that one month. How do we compare to the national average? We're right on target under, well, based on enrollment. Okay, and under normal conditions. We're a little bit higher on breakfast participation than the national average.
If we could pause on that slide, just so I can narrate real quick.
Sure.
Just to put in perspective for the board members. So they're saying of our entire enrollment, 61% of our students participate in our lunch program and 14% participate in our breakfast program. Keep in mind, a few slides ago, Mr. Beck said we have about 41%, 42% participation rate. I mean, excuse me, free and reduced rate. So free and reduced is about 40% to 45% a year. It kind of fluctuates. The difference, 15% to 20% comes from paid sales because of the participation being higher than just the free and reduced rate. Just keep that in the back of your mind as we continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Impact, all right. This is something that is near and dear to my heart. I would pay my staff $50 an hour if I could. Under these financial times, it's unrealistic. So because we're an enterprise fund, okay, my recommendation is always if we could keep it around that 3% threshold, it would be manageable for our department to be successful financially. Just to give you an idea, for every 3%, after I pay all the bills and net out, I need to raise about $57,000. So to break that even. And we've done that over the years. We've been successful. Now, this is just another example of how hard my staff works. Meals per labor hour. Okay, the national average is about 19 meals per hour in a schedule. Okay? My staff pushes out 22 meals. So for an entire department, they're well above what they're asked to do. Labor cost analysis under normal conditions. Okay, after the changes that we made, we dropped from 82 cents in the dollar to 58 cents of sales. Smallwear, software, paper, and other expenses like uniforms is 10%. And our food cost is about 32%. And as you can see, to the right, the national average are right in line with our labor. Food costs and other were way below. And that's a pie chart just about, you know, where the expenses are spent. Okay, now cash revenue, okay, as you can see, that we were holding steady from 2016 right until about when COVID hit. Now, February of 2020, we were on our way to profitability. Then when COVID hit, the finances dropped right off the cliff. So as you can see, the federal and state reimbursement is holding strong up until the end of 2020 in June. But then, once we opened up again, it's just less deals, less families that we're serving. And then our expenses, okay, our labor stayed pretty much the same. Okay, we have four or five positions that we haven't replaced as of yet, but once we open up, I will need to fill those spots. And the cost of goods, services, as you can see, that the cost, what we're spending, is in line with how many meals that we're serving every week.
And if I can just go back, highlight that one more time, sorry?
Yep.
Just to add to that, just to put in perspective of what these numbers mean left to right, it's obviously oldest to newest. I really wanted to just highlight the cash sales line, the very first line. When I talked about the 60% or 61% participation versus the free and reduced 40% to 45%, those are your first two lines, where it says federal and state. That's the funding that comes through for the free and reduced students, and the cash sales are à la carte items and people who actually pay cash. So to highlight, we were about $1 million a year last year. Towards the end of the year, the last four months, we were not in school. However, it looks like it would have been right on target for September through December this year so far. Although it says 4,200, we have not accepted any cash payments. That's people catching up from accounts in the past, maybe over the summer or something like that. For labor costs, again, we talked about that, but ingredients is really where Mr. Beck and that co-op he talked about with the consortium with several districts. Although we've been having, you know, higher labor costs and higher, lower, a little bit below participation, it's exactly where it should be trending. It's trending lower, so you buy less because you're selling less, which is exactly how to show Mr. Beck is doing a phenomenal job with the resources that he has. Go ahead. Thank you.
And to achieve those numbers, my staff is utilizing every product that we possibly can from the USDA. So we actually, at one point, they were offering so much food that we actually had to utilize a cold storage unit to hold the food, but we're slowly emptying that out because we are using the product. to hold the food, but we're slowly emptying that out because we are using the product just to save money. Just, would you like to jump in?
So basically, we talked to committee back in November when we came to the point where, okay, the food service department isn't doing as well. However, it's a lot to do with, you know, everybody being free and participation of no cash sales. We were going to present to the board an update in December. Excuse me, in January, but late, late December, they signed a last-minute executive order, not executive order, stimulus, excuse me, from the federal government. And we wanted to wait to hear more from that. Although the Department of Agriculture hasn't rolled it out yet, between my staff and Mr. Beck went through and found where it impacts school districts. So basically saying, we're going to get fifty-five percent of the difference between reimbursements received last year to during COVID. So if we were to have gotten a hundred dollars in reimbursements prior to COVID and then collected nothing in reimbursables during COVID, we would get fifty-five percent of the difference, so fifty-five dollars for every hundred dollars. So that translates to, if you go to the next slide, we did an estimate, although we again, we have not gotten official guidance. This is an estimate based on how we were doing from year to year. They did increase the reimbursement amount per meal, federal and state. So that was able to help with this, which is why it's only the last four months of last year. Going into this year, you'll see more reimbursements than prior year, so we will not get any stimulus. So we're projecting the fifty-five percent allocation to be about a hundred fifty-seven thousand.
Thank you. This is our, this was our immediate plan to increase revenue. The district is now offering seven days' worth of meals versus the five. We started that immediately in mid-December, I believe it was. And I just reported our our numbers to the state just this week. And there has been a significant difference. So if we stay open with hybrid and the food distribution and pre-K and kindergarten, I'm very confident that, once we open fully, that we'll be in great shape. We have a little bit of competition, well, we actually have a lot of competition with the EBT card, stimulus checks, increased extended unemployment, and even the weather. When we have bad days, the parents don't come out. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of families hurt. But I was totally wrong today because the numbers were were very high. Okay, our path to profitability. Full-day kindergarten, okay. I estimate that we're going to have an increase of a hundred and fifty-five thousand meals. Full-day preschool. I was totally caught off guard with those little guys. They they can eat. Yeah, they can eat. We're close to ninety-five to a hundred percent participation with those with those guys. So, yeah, they're, and they love it. They love it. The kids are very, very happy. They seem to be very relaxed in their classrooms. So it's it's all good. It's all good. And then Tuesday, the eighteenth, yeah, Tuesday, the eighteenth, we open up with Garden State Academy. And we'll be feeding them off-site as well. Okay, I spoke about the salary increases, you know, where where we can, where possible, if any of the full-timers. We don't have very many full-timers. There's only twelve of us out of sixty-six. But if, where possible, that's something that that I wouldn't be able to guarantee. If we could replace them with part-timers, if it does come up. But each school, based on their size, has different amounts of responsibility. Again, if possible, I'd like to see if we could introduce a dinner meal. But that's mandated based on the regulations. I believe we have to have at a minimum of fifty percent free and reduced, but things have changed over over time. Future investments. When we get back on track financially, I'd like to maybe bring in a food truck. I think it would be great for the staff. It would be great for the kids. We'd have, we'd be mandated on the USDA regulations. But I think if we could travel around, put a schedule, the truck could hit each school on a different day. And then I would like to, sooner than later, add an additional day for training for professional development for my staff. Because the more they know and the more comfortable they're with with the regulations, they would definitely behoove us to do that, especially financially. Okay, and closing out. The requirement is for dining service to be self-sufficient. If there is a loss, the board or local taxpayer must make a distribution to the food service fund. I hate asking for things. I really do. I'm an independent thinker. My staff are independent people. But we we need help. We need help at this time because we can't guarantee that we're going to be open full swing next September. If we are, which I'm praying and keeping my fingers crossed, then more than likely, we won't need that money. But I think it would be prudent to be better than safe and sorry. So.
To clarify that point, this, he didn't read the next sentence, but I will. So at this time, we project about a million dollars may be required from the local budget. Provided we're back in September, we'll be back and remaining self-sufficient. So the statement he just made is praying and hoping for next year to be self-sufficient, but that does not take away from the need from this year of having a loss. So although last year, sales were down, as you saw in that chart, about a half million dollars was the impact of the food service department, they had a healthy balance to be able to absorb that. Their balance absorbed them all the way until the middle of November. That is at the point where it was a turning point, and we updated the committee in December, hoping to talk to the board in January. Then we waited for stimulus information, and I just, we just didn't want to wait anymore, hoping to hear more about it. But it doesn't sound as though we're going to be benefiting as much as other districts might. Some districts are doing okay because they are one hundred percent reliable, relying on reimbursements. As you see in our history, we do so rely about a million dollars a year on cash sales in order to balance our books because our participation isn't more than forty or forty-five percent. Some districts have higher participation, so they're going to balance out easier. So basically, this next, what we're saying is the next steps is we did have a meeting with the county office on the day after we presented to our committee. The county office said most districts or some districts annually distribute, like we used to ten-plus years ago, where it's part of your budget process, you make an annual distribution to your food service department. It was not budgeted for us because we did not anticipate COVID or the loss. So we'll have to be found with local funds. We're having this discussion with you today. And what we're anticipating is starting this month is doing a monthly transfer for the closeout of books. So we did closeout November and December already, and we'll be bringing that up on the transfer, on the transfers on business, on the finance and ops, the amount to cover in November, December, and we'll basically be doing a month-to-month analysis. So we're projecting a worst-case scenario of a million. However, that stimulus money will offset the million as well as anything else that comes along, that higher participation with now with the new students and more meals that we've been getting. We were doing about eight thousand meals in the spring when you saw those numbers as a loss. That was about eight thousand meals a week. We are now up to fifteen thousand meals a week, hoping, I didn't get the numbers from today, but I'm hoping it'll be more as we get more participation. So this communication to the board was just, unfortunately, for the first time in a very long time, the food service department does need a distribution from the local budget, so.
Yeah, just just to clarify, in the amount of meals served, January, we served eighty-eight thousand meals. So the numbers are ticking up, so please, please stay open.
Any questions?
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Beck, you also hand deliver meals in the summertime also, right?
Summertime, summertime, we don't.
No summertime at all?
No summertime meals.
Okay.
So that has been explored this past summer because of COVID, and we looked at the man-hours needed and the meals we were getting at the time, and it did not balance out, so we would have been in a bigger deficit, so we chose to not do. We did partner with the food bank that did weekly, well, actually, Cooper Levinson and Let Us Eat Please, and we were able to do distributions to family through the food bank over the summer. So that's how we were able to meet the needs of our students without having to go further into a deficit.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other questions, board members? Okay, well, Tom, I just want to thank you personally for the great job that you've done over all these years, you and your entire staff during our normal times. But but during these times especially, I mean, just doing God's work between you with the help of transportation, getting those meals out, it's just so important. We just, we just got feedback today that people were just so appreciative of our employees out there in that freezing rain.
Yeah, they'll do, they'll do whatever it takes.
So thank you, and thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks to the staff, to everyone.
And thank you, everyone, for being patient, you know, with with us. And I'd like to thank Michelle and Kevin too, because I hit those two guys up always for the last, it's always last minute, and they're always just so great, so thank you to both, Evie.
Thank you, Tom. Good job.
Can everyone hear us okay? I heard we weren't coming through so loud. Are we all right, a little better now?
We have been adjusting along the way. I've been communicating with those involved, so bringing the mic to your, using the mic close to your mouth, basically. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ms. Michelle Fisher, the Director of Transportation, who's going to share the status of her department. Michelle?
So hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Fisher, if you don't know, Director of Transportation. I've been in transportation for, since two thousand. This is my first year as director, so wow, what a year. Nothing like getting thrown into the fire, but that's okay. It's a learning experience. It's been great.
Welcome, Michelle. The biggest thing is even though we don't hear the difference here with the microphone, people at home really do. So if you could just keep it closed as we go along.
I talk loud, so I was afraid.
I know, we do talk loud, but they don't hear the same line, so thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm used to talking over that radio all the time, so I have a very loud voice, so, okay. So it's nice to see you all in person. I haven't seen you in a long time, so hi, everybody. Okay, so we're going to talk tonight. We're going to start with where we were. And we had a three-year plan, so we're going to reflect on year one and two and where we are currently, and then our future. Resources are our biggest problem at the moment. We are really shorthanded. We are in a driver deficit. An abnormal school year. If we had all of our buses running full-time, we are down three contracted drivers and two bus aides. So we are behind. We have done quite a bit of advertising. We've tried everything, but when we get further in, we have a few suggestions that maybe you'll support along the way to try to get us some, a few more drivers. But as a support, as support, our biggest thing is to support all of the programs. We are so thrilled to be part of, I know I am personally, my first year, to be able to say we did full-day kindergarten and full-day preschool. Like, it's exciting, but it's also challenging at the same time. So we're going to move on. So I'm responsible for a nine-million-dollar budget. I know it's a big number, but that includes, you know, all of our buses and payroll and et cetera. We have seven office staff, including myself, most of the time. We are down a person at the moment, but we're working on it. We have eighty-five contracted drivers, five substitutes, and thirteen bus aides, mechanics, mechanics helpers. We have quite a large fleet, thanks to all of you. We replace, as Mr. Castellano was saying in one of the previous presentations, we supplement every year. We get usually six buses, eight buses, depending on the year, so that we don't have that big hit because they they transfer out every fifteen years. We have to replace them, and buses don't usually last fifteen years. They take a lot of beating in the township. Where are we? We travel about one-point-three-million miles every year between just the back and forth every day and the sports and field trips that we do. And we'll use upwards of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand gallons of diesel fuel, which is a lot. We are currently doing four-hundred-and-ninety-four routes on a daily basis to and from all our various schools. And we contract out forty-three of those routes. We have two-hundred-and-thirty-eight students presently receiving aid in lieu of transportation. And what is that on the bottom? Is that something I messed up?
Now it's the screen. It's one thousand field trips.
So it's one thousand field trips. On a, on a typical school year, that's what we would do. I told you I would mess this up.
Sorry, Cap.
Okay, next screen. The graphic, Tom. Thanks, Tom. Okay, so.
Is that what you want?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. So in year one, in nineteen-twenty, we did an analysis and we went over all of our routes and we tried to, I don't want to say tweak them, but we tried to make them as efficient as possible. So we we did some adjusting and we were able to consolidate a few of them, which is a good thing. We restructured our office a little bit. We added a second coordinator and replaced something else. We tried to increase our driver pool, which we did, but it seems like every time we hire one or two, we lose two or three. So it's kind of been a yin and a yang. We, we're still in a deficit. And we've done, again, a lot of advertising. We've done a lot of radio. We've done a lot of social media. We've done the gym. We've done everything we could think of to try to get drivers on board and keep them on board. Okay, so, yes, so our, we went to, we looked at our local competition just to see what their rate of pay was, what they offer. They offer a higher rate of pay, but they do not offer benefits. So that's the trade-off. We offer benefits for full-time employment, and it is, it's kind of a, it actually winds up being a little bit more, so I don't, I don't know. We modified our our bus aides so that they all have five hours every day, so that we could keep them as well and continue to advertise for them too. Okay, so we were able last year to increase our fleet. We got four fifty-four-passenger buses, which are the full-size buses. We got three thirty-nine-passenger minibuses, which are not the little buses, but the mid-sized buses that are fairly large, and a thirty-nine-passenger wheelchair bus. We also were able, due to savings, to get an additional minibus.
That's nineteen-twenty. You're thinking of twenty-one. You're thinking of this year.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's last year. I'm on this year. I'm on next year already. So every year, we look at our fleet and we go through our yard, and we have like buses that are totally rusted or trailers that are just a mess, or vehicles that don't run anymore, things like that. And we put them on a website and we try to dispose of them. What we can't dispose, we scrap. So last year, we were able to make thirty-two thousand dollars in in those areas. And then we remove those vehicles from the insurance, which is also an additional savings. And this year, yay, here we are. We've been able to do full-day kindergarten, preschool, and we brought back five special ed routes that were contracted from outside vendor. We'd like to do more, but that's what we were able to do this year based on our driver pool. So we also did a little changing in the driver's pen. We changed the driver's. We changed the drivers from per run to an hourly rate, and we pay, we increased their rate to $15 an hour. We, our substitute driver pool, right at the present time, we only have about two that are working. Two full-time, one part-time, for eighty-five drivers, it really doesn't work. But we're making it work, because we're on the hybrid schedule, and that is helping, we're able to jingle and juggle a little bit. We, again, have done a ton more advertising, but again, we're still, there's our three vacancies. We have several people ready to retire, and we've had a few resignations. I'm not really sure if it's COVID-related, or aid-related, or just had enough, I'm not really sure. But we've had a few people leave, and, again, we're able to meet our demands, just because of the hybrid schedule, it's helped. So, we're asking to increase our driver rate from $15, or no, this is the bus aides, I'm sorry. We increased their rate to $17.35. They do not get any benefits, they are not full-time, they get a flat hourly rate. We are advertising for them as well, we are two behind for that as well. And we are, again, able to meet, because of the hybrid schedule, we're able to move people around a little bit. When we go back full-time, I don't know, but we always seem to manage somehow, but I don't know. So, this is where we are. We are asking for, oh, no, this is what we got this year, we got eight 54-passenger buses, I should put my glasses on, I could probably see better. And we were able to get one 39-passenger minibus as well. I hit the wrong button. See, I told you. We have 25 vehicles on the market this year, right now, currently, that we're trying to dispose of, like I explained before, and we estimate it's about $21,000, we don't know for sure, because we haven't sold any yet, because COVID kind of prevented us from being able to do any of that until recently, we just, we actually just started this week. And as we put them on the sale, we can remove them from the GIFT, from the insurance. So, what we're looking for, next year, we would like to bring back five to seven more special ed runs, and that's all contingent upon hiring additional drivers and aides. We also are offering, or trying to offer parental contracts. So, some of our special ed routes are costly, and it only involves one child. If we can offer that parent monies to drive their own child, sometimes it's a lot, a lot less expensive than it would be to contract it out with a vendor. Because, you know, they need the aide, and they need the nurse, or they need, you know, other things besides just the bus or the van or the driver. We are also looking to increase our driver rate to $17 an hour. We think maybe that will help entice people to come on board and to keep them as well. It's still lower than our competitors' rates, which is around 2021. We are also asking, so, the cost to obtain a CDL is, it's about, I think it's a little over $300. So, we're asking, instead of the person putting out the money upfront, if maybe perhaps you would entertain the idea of absorbing that cost for them, maybe that would help them to try. It's a process to get a CDL, it's difficult, it has changed over the years, and each area gets worse and worse. The physical part of it, the physical that you have to pass is very stringent, and it's twice a year instead of once a year. It's changing, ever-changing due to that. So, if we were to pay their upfront costs, though, we would like to somehow have some type of a contract with them that they would have to stay with us for two years. Okay, we'll have to look into, I'm sorry. And so, for the bus aides, we're looking to, we're asking to increase their rate to $18. We're also thinking about possibly making them full-time, or, we were talking about, someone had mentioned, I don't know what you call it, but it's like there would be a bus aide and a para, so they would ride the bus, go into the classroom, and then come back on the bus. So, that's something that's really out of the box, but something that I believe they're doing somewhere else, and I don't know if it's something we could do yet, but we're gonna look into it. And for this year, we're asking, again, for eight more buses, six 54-passenger buses, and two 39-passenger minibuses. We are continuing to monitor our disposal of vehicles and removing them from the insurance.
You want to take the slide?
That's you.
Please. So, we spoke a lot about, we're moving forward, this is really for next year's proposal, where we're trying to go with a department, like the net effect. So, increasing the rate, the drivers, you know, just a few years ago, were making nine and 10 as their base pay, and the board has worked very hard for the past four years to get them to the $15 mark. We're trying to inch closer to be our competitive, to our competitors, so we can retain drivers, so 17 is like the next step. That net effect for the drivers that we have at $2 an hour for the number of days worked is about 185,000. The least paid, which is part of our, you know, least purchase replacement plan, will be another 200,000. Bringing runs back in-house, which is the ultimate goal, once we get the people, we're doing really well with the equipment, and those runs we talked about can be anywhere from 30 to 180,000 dollars a run. So, depending on, you know, the location, the severity, the length of the run with the contractors, for this example, we assumed bringing back five runs at 80, which is kind of, sort of low conservative, just to make sure we can make ends meet. So, the net savings with this proposal, although it looks like, you know, raising the bus aides and raising the drivers, the net effect truly would be about $15,000 savings, provided we get the personnel to bring the runs in, which is the ultimate goal. So, next steps for the Board of Ed, we're doing the presentation tonight. The 23rd, we're looking for a resolution for the new onboarding process. We're thinking that might have to go just a regular resolution, or I'm not sure, because right now, it's kind of, salary's kind of policy, so I'm not sure what, how we're gonna do that quite yet, once we know we have support, we'll figure that out. Covering the startup costs for the CDL specifically. The budget process, we'll be approving those additional buses as part of the replacement plan, and then come spring, we'll be hiring again for the start of November for a full staff. Ongoing hiring, actually, now for the vacancies, but just, you know, being more aggressive with this onboarding process to be able to do that.
So, ultimately, the more staff we have, the more we're able to accomplish. So, our goal, of course, is to have all of our runs done in-house, because that's the way, that's the way I would prefer to do it, that's the way I think everybody would like to do it, it would be a financial savings, but it would also be, I would have control over the drivers, like, it would be our drivers, our buses, you know, all of our own staff, and that's ultimately, that's ultimately our goal, but of course, that does depend on the resources that we are, we're able to attain. But you guys have been so generous, and so, we are so appreciative, I hate asking for anything, especially during a COVID year, but the buses that we get every year, we are very grateful, and so, anything you could do to help us would be great. And thank you so much for inviting me tonight.
Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. Board member questions, Kristy, and then Patrick. They can't hear you at home. They can't hear you on the West Coast, but on the mic, so.
Some people don't wanna hear me.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I just have a few questions. Because we're losing staff, do you guys do exit interviews to see the reasoning why we're losing so many staff? Or have we, and also, other companies, when you research the other vendors and other school districts, what, how did we compare, you know? Are they going to other districts to work? Or do people want to be here, but then leave because of pay or benefits? So, that's my first question. And then, 43 contracted runs, right, right now? Yeah. How many of those runs are for our special education population and go to schools inside of a township? In other words?
Yeah.
How many of our students that attend school in our buildings are on those runs versus, say, a private school using an EHT bus?
If I can field the second question, and then you can do the first, Michelle, that might work better. Just for the second question, we can get the data for you, Mrs. Byrd. I will just say, a special ed run, I'll use Miller as an example, for a self-contained special ed smaller minibus, to do that run will take, you know, longer in time for pickup and drop-off, just because they're door-to-door, they take longer to load, longer to unload, than a, I know it's been said before at this board level, we will have a contract for a Miller run for special ed, but we'll do a Leonard Christian, that's just an example. A Leonard Christian would take, you know, 20, 30 minutes, round trip, just picking up and dumping off, where special ed students take more, longer time. So, where we can tier a Leonard Christian run, we wouldn't be able to do that for a special ed run. So, we'll get the exact number for you guys, but that is, ultimately, I think our goal is to get the drivers to be able to have those longer runs, to be able to facilitate those, but right now, it's a tiering issue. So, if you want to take the first part?
I just wanna, I'm sorry. I appreciate that, you know, that makes complete sense. What alarms me with it, though, is that our special education population needs consistency, and if we're outsourcing those buses, I imagine we don't have as much consistency with the drivers and the aides. So, while it may take longer to get our kids home safely to and from school, I worry that if we had them on our own employees' buses, that they would be more consistent. So, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if we're talking about equity and.
100% agree with you.
But that's it, thank you. And then, just the other question. Okay, it was exit interviews, do we do exit interviews to kind of poll our staff why they're leaving, so that maybe addressing some issues?
So, all of the school districts are in a deficit at the moment, I mean, everyone is having a very hard time securing bus drivers. They're all, they're all in the same position, so it's not that they're going to another district or another company. A lot of our drivers are just, they've been here a long time, and it's to that point. It just, it just seems like, you know, everybody came at the same time and is leaving at the same time, if that makes sense. And do we do exit interviews? Only if it's not a retirement, if it's something sudden, or, you know, a disagreement, or whatever the case may be, then, then yes, we will absolutely sit down and speak to them and find out what's going on. But most of our drivers are retirees, unfortunately.
Patrick, yes. Thank you, thank you for the presentation, I just had a quick question. It was highlighted a couple of times, able to meet new demands due to hybrid scheduling, so, will we not be able to meet demands when we go back to full-time? Because it was highlighted a couple of times, so I was just wondering.
We are short three contracted drivers, so we, at the present time, we have three contracts, which is three runs in the morning, three runs in the afternoon, times three, that we do not have a driver for. So, we don't have the substitutes to cover that either. It would mean office staff would have to drive those routes at this point in time, if we were to go back full-time. And we are down two bus aides.
And I would highlight that we have several out, about a dozen, between leaves and quarantines and those types of situations. So, it's not so much the three vacancies or the two vacancies, it's more the bigger picture conversation we're worried about.
Yes, we also have, right now, 13 drivers out on medical for at least until May. And some are out maybe longer, depending on the circumstances.
Okay, did I answer my question? Okay, thank you.
I see Mr. Price next.
Thank you, hi, Michelle.
Hi, how are you?
Great job tonight at the presentation, it's a lot to digest, and you're answering the questions quite well. And we are in a unique situation, sometimes we tend to forget that when we look at a budget, but we're also in a pandemic, so you have to kind of go along with the flow a little bit on it. But my question is, I think it's a great idea with the sign-on bonus, maybe that'll help for the drivers, not a sign-on bonus, but to pay for the training for the drivers.
The onboard.
I think that's a great idea, and hopefully, that'll, you know, get some people interested that way. The other question I had, I know that the drivers have benefits, but do the bus aides have benefits?
No, they do not.
They do not? Okay.
That's something that we looked at, I don't, I don't have a huge turnover with bus aides, but I'm having a hard time getting new ones to come onboard.
Okay, but they pretty much work the same amount of hours.
Yes, they do.
Okay, and the salaries seem similar that I was looking at, so, that was just a question I had, so, all right.
We are very, we're competitive with everyone else, so, we're not, they're not underpaid or they're not overpaid, but we're competitive.
You don't seem to have a problem with recruiting bus aides, it's mostly the drivers.
It's mostly drivers, correct.
Okay, thank you.
As does everyone else, unfortunately.
And I do just want to highlight and commend Michelle and her department, they also came up with a, I want to be a Driver 101 handbook, so, when anybody comes off the street, it has like a step-by-step, go to DMV, get a book, get your permit, get behind the wheel. Like, so, it's very user-friendly that way, and that will be another resource to be able to use when we onboard, so. You've done a great job, we're trying, we're trying everything.
We are trying, and it's been, it's been a work.
Michelle, I really like the idea of using a pair on a bus, like, I think these students, you know, will really like that, having a para, instead of just a regular bus aide. So, I, will they, if their pair is in our system, they'll get an hourly wait, rate after that?
So, we're still floating ideas, we did speak to the special ed director as well as union president, but it's still being worked out in the details, whether it's a stipend for a current para, or whether it's a bus aide becoming full-time or becoming a para, or a new hire blended altogether. So, we are still working that out, because paraprofessionals are in the bargaining unit on the EHTEA, where Transportation Department is not, so, we're trying to work something out, but we will be hearing more about that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Well, we're working on that change, Dr. Gugio, we're trying, thinking out of the box. I said, we're working on that out-of-the-box mentality, we're trying.
And I appreciate that, I really do, but one thing I want to say is, I appreciate how you respond to our needs, no matter what we need and what we needed, so, you, Tom, Kevin, you're all in the room, and again, kudos to you.
It's definitely a team effort, for sure.
You make us look good, because we talk about out of the box, you know, sometimes we come up with some stuff and you make it happen, so, appreciate that.
Well, we are a team, that's for sure.
See Michelle Barde next?
Yes, I'm hiding in the back everywhere. I like hiding, but thank you for your presentation, we love our bus drivers, we treat our bus drivers very well. We, in my district, we did actually give stipends to paras, and it really was useful, as the students were already had connections with the paras, and it gave the paras and the drivers to make more money. So, that is an idea that I love, and I think would work great for our township.
Thank you.
Now, if we can just get them to drive the bus.
And it also speaks to Mrs. Byrd's point about consistency and, yes, yes, correct, yeah, something we never.
Mrs. Swaggy next.
Hi, very good, thank you. I have heard that a lot of people do want to come and drive, but the $1,000 to get started is a hindrance, especially when they're unemployed to begin with. So, I think that would help you a lot, because that's what they said, if they help, you know, if they help me upfront, then I could help doing it.
Because they have the, they have an initial physical, and they have their actual driving permit, and then there's a few other little incidentals in between, but it's, I think it's a little over $300. We don't charge them for the actual training or anything.
But if they left within two years, the value is a thousand.
Absolutely, yes, because then they have to pay for the training.
Department in acquiring more drivers.
Well, that's exciting, thank you.
Anything else, board members? I just wanted, before I go to Kim, I wanted to thank you as well, Michelle, great job this year, and great job to all the drivers and all the staff, we really appreciate what everyone's doing, you know, like I was talking about a little earlier, along with Tom's staff getting that food out, just God's work. getting that food out. Just God's work. Wonderful stuff. Now, I just want to clarify, and it ties in with, with Patrick's question, I think. The, the two things we're looking to do, the upfront help with the C D L as well as the salary bump, we want to do that now so that we can transition back as soon as we can and we'll have enough staff to do that. Am I correct? So it's not, it's not technically a budget that's, that's going to kick in in September. We need to do that now so, so we can be ready to roll. Am I right in that?
That is correct, Mr. Castellano. We would appreciate doing it now. What we showed you was, don't make a decision today that will burn you next year. So I wanted to show you, we have the money now because of this hybrid COVID situation, so that's not a concern for the board maybe. But I wanted to show, if we do this, you're still going to be okay next year. So that's what the portrayal was. But yes, if we can implement that now, that would be fantastic. So we can have something on the twenty-third agenda.
Okay, if everyone's all right with that. And then the other point, I just also want to echo what Mrs. Byrd brought up. And I mean, you know my feelings. We want to bring these routes in-house, especially those special ed.
Nobody wants that more than I do.
As quick as, as quick as we can. And Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, go ahead.
I'm glad you said that's something that we could, we brought up that we could do now because the first thing I wrote down was like, you know, the fact that we increased our substitute rate in order to get, you know, to get quality people and to put ourselves in a forefront. I was thinking the exact same thing for our drivers. So I'm on board.
Thank you. That will definitely help with recruitment and retention. So I do appreciate that. I know we appreciate that.
Good.
Thank you.
And it'll get us, you know, able to get rolling back to normal as soon as possible. And Dr. Grucci has one final point.
Yes, one final point for the, for the evening. I'd just like to inform the board that Central Office right now is looking at a change to the policy regarding the COVID-19 situation, where currently we, in the policy, it speaks to children, our students returning to school for their in-person instruction at the end of the marking period. We'd like to tweak that to the, the end of the month. We did a lot of research and working with transportation, which is huge, and, and scheduling, rostering, if you will, the enrollment and all that. We, we, we are sure that we can do it. So we're going to have to make a change to the, to the policy. With that, following that would be a survey to parents to see who would be interested in doing that and that has to get out soon. And then followed by that, speaking of surveys, we're looking at putting a survey out regarding our current hybrid model. So more to come on that in terms of what the questions will be. It'll be short and sweet. But as you know, the pandemic teams are working now and that's a small collection of stakeholders, but that policy will provide data on a broader group of stakeholders. So that's, I'd like to inform the board, that's the update on the COVID situation.
Good. Very good. Okay, so that will end our presentations. Thank you very much. The next items are two items of new business that we're going to be actually voting on this evening. The first is, as I discussed at, at the top of the meeting, everyone hear me okay? I'm trying to do my best. I know it's not coming through as well on the East Coast or perhaps Western Pacific time. We are requesting that our teachers and our staff be moved to the highest priority possible for vaccination. And in addition, we think it makes sense to vaccinate our staff on-site. We all know that the tremendous demands on our employees, our teachers teaching hybrid, are working countless long hours and the, the time involved, we all see in scheduling appointments for vaccinations is very, very difficult. And we're essentially asking to treat our employees as frontline workers, as they are. And let's get them vaccinated as soon as possible. And we think that's going to be a very, very important part of getting this whole thing back to normal. So that's our resolution. I want to thank Mrs. Byrd for her assistance, helping me put that together. And the second item then we have is a, a job description for our assistant superintendent. So I'm going to, with that, then ask for a motion on those two items, three point one and three point two. May I have a motion?
Motion, Maria Sullivan.
The second. I have a motion and a second. Is there?
I'm sorry, it was the second. I hadn't heard a couple.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call please.
Miss Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, thank you all for passing those. And as, as I said at the outset of the meeting, we, we have made contact between Dr. Grucci and myself, between many policymakers with regard to the vaccinations, and we're hoping for a positive result. And I, I don't think we're the only district. I think we're going to see this statewide. So we're going to move to public comment at this point. And so I want to just, just go through the rules again so everyone remembers. We'll take folks who are here in person first. Generally, it's three minutes, but sometimes the chair will allow some leeway when it's, when it's, makes sense. We cannot, as a reminder, discuss personnel or litigation. What we want to do with our phone-ins is we're going to please ask for questions and comments first and then we'll, you know, we'll hang up and then we'll address them as best we can. I understand we have some email comments as well. We'll do the best we can with those right at the end. And then I just want to remind everyone that you'll, you'll see four point one is, is public comment and so, and then four point two is board member comment. So we do have time set aside for board members to comment as, as much as you'd like under four point two. So with that, we'll go to anyone who's in person first, if you'd like to come up. Well, okay, well, thanks for coming out. We appreciate that. And so we will go to the phones.
And as a reminder, we now have a queuing system, so there's no need to repeat calling. You will just be in queue in the order that you call in.
Anything?
At this time, it has been up for a minute. I was just waiting for that mark to hit, but we did test the phones. We do know it's working, so I guess there are no callers.
Okay, well then, we'll go to our email questions. We'll do the best we can.
So we have a public comment from Claire Loges, L O G E S, I'm not sure how to say that, ten Fairview Drive. Please let us know if middle school will have spring sports. If not, please give an answer as to why or why not. Thank you.
I don't have the, have that answer yet?
I have the answer somewhat, from what we know at this point. I think everyone knows that Aggie Township, our middle school program, participates in the Atlantic Cape League. And at the current time, superintendents are having a conversation and asking the same question, are we having spring sports? Being a member of N J S I A, I can tell you that tomorrow we have a meeting and we'll be discussing that further. So a lot of times they wait for the, the high schools. You know, yes, we're having spring sports at high school. We have to look at how that's going to roll out and that's going to help the middle schools if, if they have sports. At this time, I will tell you that six schools are not participating this year, when there's not many that are, that are in that league. And two schools are considering, considering limited options such as only offering maybe one sport. So bottom line, there is discussions going on and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, I'll have more of a firm answer for you, whether it's yes or no. But as you all know, we decided we were not going with middle school. So it would be something we would be bringing back if we decide to do so and if there's any competition out there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
We have three total, so I have another one. So the name, Kim Minshell, from one fifteen Sandbar Road. Why is the summer school program for special education students only extended by three weeks? That is not enough. That will not make up for all of the learning loss, excuse me, lost learning. Why isn't it extended by four or six weeks?
Okay, very good.
Want me to take that one? Okay. The, the summer school, the summer extended school year will be held seven of the eight full weeks of July and August to maximize learning, yet affording our families opportunity to take the necessary grade of the needs during the summer. So seven out of the eight weeks.
And there's a second part to that question statement. I should have read it all together, I apologize. Same public per, member. All students are suffering because E H T refuses to open the schools for in-person learning five days a week. Data released by the Centers for Research on Education Outcomes at Stanford University provided a sobering estimate of the learning loss caused by school closures. Across nineteen states, it ranged from a third of the year to a year in reading and from three-fourths of a school year to two hundred and thirty-two days in math. What will E H T do to help students catch up?
I got that one. Well, we are aware that there's, there's a learning gap, a learning loss, a learning delay, whatever folks are calling it these days. I like to refer to it as a learning delay. And it's, it is nationwide and we are aware. And because we are aware, we currently, every day, are looking to assist students to, to catch them up, to close gaps. And we, we do that through our formative assessment, the R T I process that I spoke about. We will be presenting plans for summer programs, ideas, to, to assist students with the catch-up. And as you know, we applied for the New Jersey Department of Education Learning Loss Grant. So Ms. Moss and Mr. Santilli have some really great innovative ideas that they built into that grant. And we're very hopeful that we'll get it, but we're going to take those ideas and put them in, in this next year's budget for you to review and to consider to assist us with this. So again, bottom line is, we're, we're not waiting for June thirtieth for summer school. We are starting now, we've been throughout, that's part of our process, what we do. We assess kids every day. We work hard to meet their needs. So hope that answers it. But I just, do the public know we, we are aware that that factor exists and we are assisting kids now.
And I would just, you know, summarize and add, we are doing everything we can to get back to fully in-person. The circumstances don't allow us to be there right now. We're in hybrid due to the global pandemic, but we, we all want the same things. And as Dr. Grucci said, we certainly are going to explore every avenue open to us to help our students catch up from getting a little bit behind during this particular year. We understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. We have one more. Amanda Snell from eighteen Pinedale Avenue. Has there been a change in curriculum that students no longer receive spelling words at the elementary school level? I believe that weekly spelling words are important for vocabulary building, taking tests, and study skills for younger students. My children at the elementary school level used to have weekly spelling tests that aligned with Super Kids curriculum. With the new curriculum for language arts, we have not had any spelling words this year. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take that briefly by saying that spelling is fully aligned to phonics, instruction in lessons, and is no longer taught in isolation. And prior to this meeting, we did have a presentation on some of the resources that we use and process of teaching, reading, writing, spelling, et cetera. So the board members are informed of how that all goes. But therefore, staff does do offer digital platforms, slides and boom cards to see. Students could repeat what they see, the word that they see, and they could spell. And they do spell during their independent literacy time or in word work during guided reading instruction. So it's embedded. Gone are the ten spelling words that most of us probably got, read them five to ten times each, put them in a sentence, memorize them, and you're going to have your test on Friday. And then on Monday, I forgot what the word was. So, so we, we are looking to integrate into relevant learning experiences in the classroom. So it's a different approach, but spelling is a current.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we've gotten through our, our public comment. Now it's time for a board member comment. Board members. Mrs. Sullivan?
One thing we talked about at one of our last meetings was having our sports video or livestreamed. And just at Christmas time, I know for the Christmas holidays, it was really fun to see each different school put on their, their performances. And it was really great to watch one every couple of days. This week, I had the privilege of being able to watch not only the rec, our township's doing a terrific job also of the rec games, but also of the girls' high school game. So the things that we talked about just even a couple of weeks ago are now already taking place. And I just want to commend the administration for that.
Agree, absolutely. Thank, thank now Dr. Mullen and what a great job she's doing. All of our arts programs that have been videoed as well, tremendous job on those. Any other comments? Board members. Mr. Price?
Thank you. I would just like to comment that very good presentation tonight during the budget presentation. Great questions. We got some answers, but we have a long way to go. We have a lot of hard work ahead of us. This is my third budget that I've had the privilege to work on. So I kind of have an understanding now of how to build and how to respond. So again, it's a unique year for everybody, so it's a little bit different this year once we're going to, as we're doing the budget, as I commented earlier. So, and I have one thing, it's not really on budget, but it's probably for Sandra. The financial disclosures for board members, is, is that the, can you comment on that? How do we do it this year? Because I haven't been able to get in and log in as I usually do.
As no other board member in
As no other board member in the state has. The state of New Jersey has updated their system. They did say their release would be yesterday, February 8th, however, has not been released yet. When it is released, I will get instructions on what the expectations are. I will then deliver them to you all and every administrator who's supposed to do their disclosure. So as soon as I know, you will know, but that's why you have not received them. Our list is usually due to the state by February 1st for them to send out their blast of emails. So they are not on time at this time. But they did tell us they still will be due by April 30th. They are not changing the deadline. So as soon as I get it, I'll share.
Okay, thank you, have a great night.
Anything else, board members? Mrs. Byrd?
All right, thank you. Two things. Last night, I was able to participate in the virtual conferences with Fernwood. And I wanted to commend all the teachers because they did a wonderful job. It was very organized, very easy to use. And more importantly, I wanted to commend the teachers because they showed such a genuine concern for the social-emotional health of my children and I'm sure across the board with everyone else's children. As educators, we value academics so much. We're very concerned about the learning loss and all the things we've talked about to fill the void over this next year from this previous year. But I think that I was very proud to be a representative in the district to see how amazing these teachers really were, just went over and beyond to make sure that our kids are okay. And if they aren't okay, they were very understanding and came up in lots of ways to try to help. So I want to say thank you for that, well done. And as far as the learning loss is concerned, I think that obviously, we're all very concerned with that. But teachers teach, and we take kids where they are, and we help get them where they need to be. And once we have them in person, they're going to catch up. And I know that teachers are working tirelessly to help plan for that. And also, Dr. Gruccio, I wanted to add, you told us so many awesome things that you guys are preemptively doing to plan for filling these voids. Sorry. It's Lisa Barnes.
It's me.
So, did our administration or contacted universities to see what universities are planning for as far as incoming freshmen, how they're approaching the COVID year and maybe poor grades that students got? Isn't that one of the proactive things you guys are doing? That's great.
Yep, yes, indeed, yep. Mrs. Elbow, our guidance director, has been on that.
So that's wonderful. So reaching out to universities to see how they're approaching incoming freshmen and students. So that's one more tool we can provide our students that are planning to go on to university. So, thank you, that's it. Thank you, teachers, and everyone else.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
I just wanted to say that, and I've said this a thousand times, that I'm the class of 93 from Acre Township School District. And I say we're the best class, and I'm so glad Terry's back. And I've always said that, and I don't say that jokingly, like I love my school district, not just from a parent perspective, but from a former student. So EHT does produce great, great people. And tonight, you know, and we're not a perfect district. You know, there is no perfect district. But I believe that we're striving for excellence. And when Dr. Gruccio talked about the fact that, you know, the feedback, you know, we celebrate and we deliberate. And the presentation tonight, I was so proud to be part of Acre Township and also be proud to be a part of a board of education that was able to work through, that is working through a pandemic, that has passed full-day kindergarten, which has been like, I don't even know how many years in the making, at least 20-some years in the making. And on top of that, a full-day preschool grant. That is amazing. That is something to be proud of, and I was just super, super proud. Every time I'm proud, but I was extremely proud tonight when I heard the presentation. So I just wanted to say that. And like I said, we're not perfect, but we're striving. And the only other thing I wanted to, just to make sure I was clear on when, when, Dr. Gruccio, when you said that we were talking about making a change at the policy for switching to hybrid? You said at the end of the month versus the end of the marking period? Like I said, February? I mean, the end of? This month?
Yes, that's why I had to make this statement and inform you.
Right, okay. I just was like, I thought I wanted to make up.
You changed this real fast.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear. It's like, I think you said the end of the month, not the marking period, okay. All right, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, board members? Everybody good? All right, and I just want to echo again, you know, we said it last week. Thank our teachers, our staff, our administration. You are heroes. You've always been, you still are. So thank you, each and every one of you. We appreciate you and we thank you. I want to see if there's anything else from administration?
No, we're good.
I want to say hello to our remote participants, Dr. Herry and Mr. Delabarca. How are you guys? Good to see you. And before we close out, I just have a couple of housekeeping duties. Now, the first thing I just want to remind everyone of is our committee structure. We stuck with the three members each. The president or vice president can sit in on a committee meeting. And also, if someone else wants to sit in, we'll do that, first come, first served. What I would ask is that, just so that we don't run the risk of having more than four, if folks could let me know, and let's use the 4:00 PM Monday time because we do that for our agenda questions. Because last week, there was just a little bit of confusion. But we worked it all out, and it was fine. So if I can just, you know, if we know who wants to be there again, and we'll go first come, first served, if someone wants to be a fourth member, that's always fine. And again, you know, our meetings, committee meetings, really shouldn't be starting earlier than 5:00 because those folks that work would have a tough time with that. Now, the second administrative item I just want to handle is I want to propose to the board that we have a mini-retreat. What does that mean? A condensed retreat where we're going to just deal with three topics. Roles and responsibilities, norms, and team building. So it'll be short. I'm proposing the night of Thursday, March 4th. Everyone could check their calendars.
Mr. Castellano, is that going to be virtual, or hybrid, or in person?
Well, yet to be determined. We'll talk, you know, probably have to be a combination.
Okay.
Mr. Castellano? If you held it later in March, near the end of the month, I might be able to be in person because I'm getting my first vaccination tomorrow.
Oh, that's great to hear.
I mean, I know that's a consideration, and I know you might have a timeline, but I'd love to be able to be in person for something like that.
All right, so we could do that as a hybrid from the cafeteria. The high school, the high school library is where we've done them before. So we could do that as a hybrid. We could push later into March if you'd like. But what is the, what is the pleasure of the board? What do folks want to do?
I think, I'm just making a suggestion. And I definitely understand, you know, being all together for a retreat in person, and that is what we are used to. But I just, I will say this, even if we had to do it then and we couldn't wait till later, we will be, you know, it will be kind of like experiencing what the students experience. A hy, you know, we're in hybrid now, and some kids are in person and some kids are at home. And although it's not the best situation, we have, you know, the children have created bonds and relationships with their teachers, even though they haven't been in person. So I think that we can still accomplish, we still can accomplish the same thing, even if we're all not there in person. That's just my opinion.
I have something on my calendar for that night. If we could push it back and Mr. Delabarca join us, I think that would be good.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Do you think it would be easier if we just submit to you when our availability is so that you can just come up with a date? Because there may be other circumstances that people don't want to say in public or whatever. If we can just get you that date.
All right, well, what we'll do is next week, we'll talk about the date later in March. You know, I was thinking of a Thursday because we have meetings on Tuesday all through February and all through March. And I don't, I don't like asking board members to be out two nights in a row, especially, you know, folks that work. That's, you know, I try to, try to, you know, give folks a break. So let's look at some Thursdays in March, and we'll discuss it again next week. This will be, again, it's a mini-retreat, 6:00 to 8:00, 8:00 PM maximum. And that would be the maximum length. Okay?
Mr. Castellano, March 11th in the board, March 11th. I have to save the date to some preschool entities. I'm going to try to hold a preschool meeting that evening since it's two weeks after state aid to give me some time to look at what we're getting for state aid for preschool expansion for next year. So I did throw that date out to a couple of them. I can move it, but I just wanted to put that out there. If it, you know, if you're saying later, then that would work. Otherwise, I'll just move my meeting because it's not official. We'll just save the date.
Okay. Well, we'll talk, you know, when we meet next week, we'll talk about, we'll see about the 18th or the 25th. The 18th will be the day after St. Patrick's Day. So that's got to be a special day for you, Patrick, I'm sure. It's the day after. But, and it's special for everyone, right? So we'll consider, let's consider the 18th and the 25th, and we'll talk about it next week. Good?
Real quick, and I want to say this, put this out there, and if I get the, you know, the dagger eye, that's okay. But I was, I was just going to say, if anyone would ever be open to a Saturday retreat. I know we used to do our budget meetings on Saturdays. And I know that usually, weekends and things to that, you think, you know, family. I mean, Saturday is my day off and Sunday. But just throwing it out there.
I'm open to it, and I preferred our Saturday budget meetings. But it's just right now, I would hate to think about how many staff it would involve to open. Yeah, I'm not sure. Shandra would have to tell me. I mean, under normal circumstances.
If it's at the high school, we do have a Saturday shift, just because there's usually events happening. And now that we're back to playing sports and things, it's during the day Saturday.
Do you usually come to our, to retreats?
Okay, so what we'll do next week then is we'll toss around a few dates, and folks may be interested in a Saturday morning. All right. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order before we move for a motion? See nothing, I'll ask for that motion.
Motion.
Okay, hands raised, all in favor?
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Be safe.